Ms. Rowell, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
President Nicholas?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
Here.
Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the work session on June second, the thirty-third meeting on June fourteenth, the special work session on June twenty-eighth, and the thirty-fourth meeting on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the minutes work session on June the second, about the thirty-third meeting on June the fourteenth, special work session on June twenty-eighth, and the thirty-fourth meeting on June twenty.
Can I get a second?
I'll second Madam President.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. I'm gonna divert from the agenda just for a few minutes. I'd like to call Mr. Love to make our introduction of our new staff member.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President, Council, and Mayor. I am very happy to introduce our new Deputy Director in the Department of Economic Community Development, Ms. Andrea Brown. She comes to us from the city of Louisville, Kentucky, where she most recently was the Deputy Director of Economic Development there. So I could have Ms. Brown say a couple of words and introduce herself.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. It's a pleasure to be joining this meeting tonight, and it's a pleasure to be at the city of Laurel. Thank you for hosting me, and I will pass the baton back over. I won't take up too much time on the agenda, but I just wanted to pop in and say hello. Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Our next agenda item is the report of the mayor and city council, and tonight we'll start with Councilman Signal.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to the city of Laurel, Ms. Brown. Looking forward to working with you. Madam President, on August the third, I attended National Night Out, Laurel Police Department. Chief Hamill, thank you and your staff for wonderful job you guys did. On August the nineteenth, I met with local twenty-four installators and allied workers. As you know, we're talking about ways we can spend some of the American Rescue money, and we're trying to get a job workforce here in the city of Laurel with the Insulator Twenty-four hosting apprenticeship program. So we're in the pre-stages of that planning, so continuing to meet with the union there to see what we can come up with, along with city staff, the mayor, and the city administration. Also, on August the twenty-fifth, the chief of police of Prince George County, I came out with Councilman Tom Denova, hosted a town a town hall, and Chief Police came out and told us his vision and his ideas for the Prince George County. It was very informative. Also, on September the fourth, I made back up. On August the twenty-ninth, we had a back-to-school drive, co-sponsored by O-six Motor Riders, Bougie Affair, Navy Federal Credit Union, Cut Above Barber Shop, Potty HQ, Fraternal Leaf Fitness, Photographer by Madison, J R W, and Councilman Tom Denova also was one of the sponsors, along with the city of Laurel. That was very productive. We gave away two hundred and fifty backpacks. Councilman Melas was out there, Councilman DeWalt, and Mayor Moe was always out at every event. So we did that on August twenty-ninth. Then I had the opportunity to run in the five K when I almost died. They had emancipation day. It was Miss Jackie Jones. That was a great event. Yes, I did that. But you can see without my yellow T-shirt tonight, the man I, some of the councils probably that was on next month, or September twentieth, hopefully, because you know, childhood, uh, council wellness is a very important to me. I think I never shared this personally, but I had a nephew who died at the council at four years old. And two years ago, when I was knocking on some doors, I miss Shay Dasper, she's on the call tonight. I don't think she's gonna speak, but Miss Gonzalez is gonna speak. She asked me, um, I didn't get my thoughts together yesterday. I haven't talked with my nephew in a long time.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, when she asked me, um, do something in Laurel.
It's okay. It's all right. Take your time. Take your time. It's all right.
Although we're off in August, I guess I stayed pretty busy. The national, like, like other council members, I attended a national night out by the police department. It was, it was an absolute fabulous event with a lot of kids that attended. I also attended K-nine Officer Steve Grass's retirement. It was the biggest retirement I've seen, and it's, it's because of the work of Chief Hamill. And it's a well-deserved thing. You wouldn't imagine how many other agencies of officers that knew Officer Grass, some of our retirees showed up in uniform and other agencies to honor Steve Grass, and I wish him the very, very best. I also volunteered at the American Legion Post sixty-car show. They had over a hundred and forty-some cars. I worked the concession stand. Lot of good food, lot of good people, a lot of good, really, a lot of good times during that. I then played in the golf tournament for Fidos for Freedom, which is right down from City Hall. Diane and our own Kim Rowell do an absolute fabulous dog, fabulous job training, training of these dogs and helping, helping people with disabilities for that. The golf tournament was great. I then, uh, I ate at the Double T Restaurant, and all that money, fifteen percent or ten percent of that goes to cats, which I I do a lot for Helen at Cats, and she's a pain, but she's, you gotta love her, because we need that type of people to save our cats and to take care of them. And then there was a promotional ceremony at City Hall. I attended that. The recipients are really well-deserving, and congratulations on their promotion. Like, uh, Councilmember Sidnor, I attended the Senior Center. Chief Malik Aziz gave a great presentation, answered a lot of the citizens' questions. You could tell he's a real community police officer that believes in the whole county of Prince George, and I think he's gonna make a great chief down here. He's been there since May. And then, like Officer, I mean, Councilmember Sidnor, the local allied workers twenty-four, the George Snyder Golf Tournament. I actually participated in that with, I think it was, uh, the FOP put up three teams for that, and it was, uh, it's in recognition of George Snyder, who died from leukemia as a result of the bestest work and everything, and that's a great union. And I wish Keith the best of luck getting that, uh, getting those jobs and everything for, uh, kids, because, or for teenagers, because it's a great, great career. And then, um, I also attended the, I call it a bookbag, but I guess they're knapsacks now, up at City Hall. There was, uh, Keith. We gave out over two hundred and fifty bags. There was a line, like fifty, sixty people long waiting for there, and I also contributed a hundred and eighty bags of my candy that I did at the food, food giveaways at the Laurel Elementary, but it was a great, great, every, all those kids were smiling. It was fabulous. And then I attended the Zoom meeting with Ben Carden, Senator Ben Carden, sponsored by Tom Denova, which was very informational by Senator Carden, and a lot of, a lot of good information that he presented to us. That's all, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Les?
Thank you, Madam President. Keith, I do have this T-shirt. I just don't have it on. I appreciate that, buddy. Thanks for pointing it out. Kind of able to get one here. Came yesterday. Last week, just a couple of things that are important. Last week, the Tuxit River Commission held a meeting, and we had as a guest the mayor-elect of Eagle Harbor. Now, if anybody doesn't know anything about Eagle Harbor, you need to learn a little bit about it. Eagle Harbor is a city of eighty residents at the lower end of Prince George's County, and it's been nominated as a heritage area because, because it turns out that all the residents are all African-American. Okay, and we were there to talk about what we could do to help them, because they've got a problem with the, uh, power utility dumping stormwater directly into their development. And the houses flood down there. They get about an inch of water, two inches of water. But more importantly, they're worried about salt, uh, fly ash pollution, because that's a, that's a, it's a no-no. It's a hazmat. So we had, want to thank the members of our Prince George's County Soil Conservation District, the manager and the supervisor were both on the line. They're gonna get some additional information. District twenty-one has already responded a while back. When I brought the issue up to them, and they're gonna work, we're gonna all work together to see if we can't get the law changed. The, the power company's exempt. They have, they don't have to have any controls on the stormwater discharge, and it's discharging directly onto this municipality. Last week, we had the Transportation Infrastructure Services Committee meeting. The big push right now is for the infrastructure bill. A lot of phone calls going on from members to Capitol Hill. Be convinced them to do something that's positive. Hopefully, they will. On Saturday, this coming Saturday, from one to five, we're gonna have Cheryl Dyer and her group are gonna be planting some trees in the morning, the hundred and fifty trees for Laurel. But in the afternoon, one to five, there'll be a memorial service for Doug Hayes up on the, up behind St. Phillips. Anybody, most everybody knows Doug. He was a good fellow. It was monotonely death in an automobile accident. And last thing I want to do, I probably, you know, I don't, I, I sent a lot of things out directly to members of the community or to members of Laurel for Tuxin, and Dave Everett responds to me pretty regularly. I want to thank Dave for, uh, pointing out some concerns he has, and I know that we're following up on those concerns. Dave, I wonder how he got from, I don't know what his engineering background is, but I know he works over at Goddard, because he used to work at the same place as my wife, so. But again, I want to thank Dave. He always has a positive statement to make about things that I've observed. And, and that's because every time it rains, I drag my wife around to the two largest developments in the area, one in, run in Howard County and one in Laurel, to see what, what the stormwater looks like, and see if we've got a problem. Well, uh, we're getting, we're getting a lot of surge water, filling up a lot of these ponds. It's unclear over in Howard County what the impact is, because there's a swale there that leads directly down to Tuxit River. I'm gonna have to talk to Dave about that. I can't get down there. I can't hike down there anymore. And that includes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Started on August third, I was at National Night Out, along with my colleagues on the council. I also attended a promotional ceremony for some of our officers on the Laurel Police Force. August twenty-fifth, I was at Tom Denova's Town Hall, along with Mayor Moe, Councilman Sidnor, and Councilman DeWalt. Lastly, on September fifth, or actually, no, yeah, September fifth, I did a back-to-school drive in partnership with Royal Chapel House International, Melissa Richardson, who's a Realtor, Ace Tax, Mad Cow, and several Raising BMW Car Club, and several others are from the area. All the proceeds we collected, we were able to donate and give to Laurel Elementary, where the principal and staff gave them directly to the children in need. So that was a really great job on the community's part. And that, yeah, that would conclude my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to Mayor Moe, we're gonna go back to Councilman Signal.
I thank you, Madam President. Like I was stating earlier, September is childhood wellness council month. We got two constituents in our area, Ms. Maria Gonzalez and Miss Shay Dasper. They shared, you know, want us to put information out about childhood wellness council, because they have children that suffer from that. And we had a two, had a walk this past Saturday, two-mile walk. The mayor was out there. The mayor was always attending his events. Miss Shay Dasper was out there, and her son. We made a childhood ambassador for the city of Laurel, along with Mia Gonzalez. Two brave young people that's fighting every day. Me is a senior Pilate High School. Just say, plays football. We just gotta keep encouraging them and make the city aware, anything that we can do for children and raise money or funds, or just acknowledge and letting folks know that this is something that's out there. We need to bring awareness to it, and I just want to thank the city of Laurel for acknowledging it every year since we've been doing it. So each year, we want to make it better and just get more support, and maybe make it a big health day, and just, because health is, is very important. So as soon as we adjust our health, especially with our children, you know, our children in the future, so anything that we can do for our children. And so I think, um, we did a proclamation this past Saturday, and I gave it to Miss Dasper. Miss Gonzalez, I believe she's on the call. If you want to say something, Miss Gonzalez, uh, the floor is open to you before we turn it over to the mayor. And Miss Shay, if you want to say something, Miss, well, I know you said you didn't want to say anything earlier, though, but you changed your mind. I think the clerk will open the mic, where you can say something. So the floor is yours. You want to say something?
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor and City Council. I just want to thank you for arranging, I'm despairing, arranging the walk and recognizing September as childhood cancer awareness. Mia, who's next to me, was diagnosed back in twenty fifteen with brain cancer. She's undergone two rounds of chemotherapy so far. She started her third round in July, but was unable to continue due to some negative side effects causing inability to walk and causing some damage to her heart. So we're hoping with some testing, the doctors will be able to identify what the cause is for that, and that once they find something, hopefully the tumor doesn't grow anymore, and she'll be able to resume chemotherapy. So just thank you again for this recognition, for allowing Mia to serve as an ambassador, and to Councilman Sidnor's point, awareness is greatly needed, especially with regards to any funding or support for company, for organizations that are doing research on treatment. The cancer treatments are pretty much thirty years old and quite detrimental to children's health. And so I think it's only two percent of federal funds are designated for research for children and childhood cancer. So anything that we can do to support those organizations that do research on treatment and finding new ways to do less invasive treatment would be great. So again, thank you so much, and appreciate this opportunity to speak to you all.
Thank you so much for being so brave, sharing your family with us, this important information out here. We're also gonna do another walk on the twenty-fifth of September around Laurel Lakes Park. This is a two-mile walk, walk around the park, so come out, wear a yellow T-shirt, and we probably have some donation forms. You want to donate something to a charity, because it's very important. That's, that's all I gotta say. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else going to speak? Okay, Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Madam President. Want to acknowledge first the passing of former city administrator William F. Bill Goddard III. Bill passed away on September the first, and there'll be a remembrance on this Friday down in Calver County where Bill lived. So if you need information or any of the services, please check our website. That information is on there. The, back in July, we did have the virtual Mayor Municipal League Summer Conference. I was able to attend that, as well as it was the Mayor's Association for Prince George's County Meeting that we meet monthly. We know that as well. All this has still been in virtual. Numerous food distributions from our Savior Lutheran Church down to the Laurel Library had one back in August fourteenth. And I do want to acknowledge and all of the officers, police officers, Laurel Police Officers during the promotional ceremony. In particular, again, we're trying to do things properly. The family was at least able to be here and watch that ceremony. So thank you, Chief. The Prince George's County District One Community Partners Meeting, held by Councilman Denova, was at the Balthville Senior Activity Center. I want to thank you for the invitation to be there. And it was nice meeting the chief and having a few words of discussion with him as well, and we invited him to come and participate and tour the city of Laurel when he had the chance. The Community Cares had a program over at the Granville Gooty Park. That was a wellness event, and that was back on the twenty-eighth of August. And as you heard, acknowledge Councilman Sidnor, and all those participated in the backpack giveaway. And a lot of people already here at eight-thirty when I get, got here that morning, so I thought everything turned out well. I know they appreciated the backpacks and school supplies. I did attend the ninth Annual Emancipation Day five K run and walk around the Alskine McCullough Field. My running days are long over, but I was able to walk, and they had a very good turnout. I think they made a couple thousand dollars for diabetes research, so I'm Jackie. I appreciate all that she's done. Metropolitan Council of Governments Monthly Board of Directors Meeting, have been attending those. And then we had the September eleventh event, our nine-eleven memorial, September tenth, which really was not up to the public. It was for the employees and council. And I do appreciate the Department of Communications for getting that together, Audrey in particular. It was a nice event, and something we should always remember. You heard about the childhood cancer awareness walk at Granville Gooty Park, and then had the opportunity to go to Saint Mary of the Mills Parish Feast Day and present a proclamation on the twentieth anniversary of nine-eleven, and then later in the day, attended the doggy dip day, stopped by the Laurel Swimming Pool. Looked like it had a great turnout. Dogs were having a real good time. But again, for our Parking Recs Department, we'll thank them for doing that. People appreciate it. On September the twelfth, we did, I did attend a remembrance ceremony for Laurel Police Department K-nine Reno. Very nice service over at the FOP's Oriole and Matt Jordan and his family in particular. Again, we all for condolences. Dogs really do become part of the family and well-attended by officers and. Again, we all for condolences. Dogs really do become part of the family and well attended by officers and his family. So nice service. Just one announcement. On September the twenty-fifth at ten-thirty, remind everyone, the McSweeney March will take will start at the Laurel Museum. And you can get information if you go to their website as well. Today, we also had a virtual meeting with Police Department and the chief hosted. We invited the twenty-first delegation as well as County Councilman Denoga to talk about police reform and how it's affecting our department and may change our department. The, we're gonna do and continue to work through MML with some of the changes that were proposed and we find maybe helpful to correct some deficiencies we see. So Chief, thank you for that. We also followed up again, as I think I reported before, we talked to the delegation about those cars, those loud noise cars. They are working, actually, Delegate Mary Lehman is working on putting a bill together for this session that'll address that. Because as we said, we need state legislation to change this and be able to enforce. It can't be done at our local level. So that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is general public hearing. Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
President Nicholas, we did have someone signed up, Heather Brooks. She sent me an email saying that she's gonna submit her comments in writing. So after the meeting, I'll be sure to send that on to the council. Thank you.
Okay. Since there's no one signed up to speak, I'm gonna open the public hearing at about six-twenty-eight. I'm gonna close the public hearing at six-twenty-eight. Our next agenda item is consideration of a bid recommendation, automatic external defibrillators, AEDs. Chrissy Cornwell, our Emergency Services Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Mayor and Council Members. Before you, is a memo dated August sixth, twenty-twenty-one recommending your approval for funds for the request of thirty-one automatic external distributors, known as AEDs. This is the last phase of the AED replacement program, providing the city with a total of over ninety standardized, state-of-the-art devices, which allow an automatic download of information directly to the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Department. In addition, the city conducted AED and CPR training in June for police officers and other city staff. The funds to finish this program at forty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-five have been approved and programmed under the FY twenty-twenty-two CIP. This purchase will be a sole source on a state contract. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. This item was discussed at our September first work session. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve what the AED bid.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Before I move on to our next agenda item, under the general public hearing, I've neglected to read something. Due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the City of Laurel will hold virtual meetings. The public is asked to submit written testimony on agenda items to the Laurel City Clerk, and that's the Kim Rao, which is K-Raw, R-A-W, at laurel dot M D dot U S by two P M on our meeting dates. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, consideration of a bid recommendation generator Granville Guti Park. Chrissy Cornwell, our Emergency Services Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before you, is a memo dated August the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one recommending your approval for the funds for the purchase of a generator for the lake house at Guti Park. This purchase is critical because the city's network configuration designates the lake house as a network hub for the southern part of the city. If a power outage would occur at the lake house, it would affect operations at the Robert J. DePietro Community Center to include wireless and cameras. In addition, any other facilities expansion in that area. The funds to purchase this generator at forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars has been approved and programmed under the FY twenty-twenty-two CIP. Thank you for your time and consideration. I just wanna add that this project is a joint effort between the Department of Information Technology, Department of Parks and Recs, and the Office of Emergency Management. Thank you.
Thank you. This item was also discussed at our September first work session. I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the funds needed to supplement the boathouse with a generator.
Can I get a second?
Second, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Our next agenda item is consideration of a bid recommendations ammunition Laurel Police Department. Chief Hamel, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Before you, as we discussed at the September first work session, is a bid recommendation for purchase of ammunition for our department. I will note that this is a sole source purchase through the State of Maryland contract with the gun shop. The contract's last four numbers are zero-two-eight-four. This funding is included in the FY twenty-two operating budget under the count ending in two-five-seven-one, and the line item was sixty thousand dollars. It's respectfully recommended. Mayor and council approved the purchase of this ammunition in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and six cents. And we thank you for your kind attention to this.
Thank you. As stated, this item was discussed at our September first work session. I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve ammunition for the Laurel Police Department.
Can I get a second?
I'll second, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Our next agenda item is consideration of a recommendation for fleet acquisition. Twenty-twenty-one Ford F-50 crew cab dump body. Brian Lee, Director of Public Works, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Mo, and Council members. The Department of Public Works has requested approval of a twenty-twenty-one Ford F-450 crew cab four-by-four dump body vehicle to be used as a part of the DPW fleet to deliver essential city services. This vehicle will go toward updating and increasing the fleet, add capacity necessary for the expansion of the city's boundaries, railways, and service areas. It is a multipurpose and will be utilized for leaf collection, snow removal, and other highway projects. The department researched several agencies to inquire if there were any current contracts for models that equal or exceeded our needs. We identified Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland as having a truck that met our requirements and specifications for the duties outlined above. They are an in-state vendor and on the Maryland state contract. Funding for this vehicle is provided for in the FY twenty-twenty-one CIP FL seven-dash-zero-one Fleet Replacement Program allocated through ordinance number nineteen-eighty-one. The cost of this vehicle, which includes necessary snow removal, plowing attachments, and installation, is seventy-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. It is my recommendation that the request to purchase this vehicle be approved at the cost of seventy-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars from Apple Ford of Columbia, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This item was also discussed at our September fifth, September first work session. I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'm gonna make a motion though, but before I make my motion, I ask Mr. Lee a question again. I think he mentioned it last week. You mentioned it last week, or done that last week, last month. I mentioned something about the Laurel Police Department has leasing vehicles now. And when do you anticipating that if the city DPW can start leasing vehicles? I know it's still early in the process, though. Do you got like a a timeframe? Do you think that might happen?
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. So we have been in touch with Enterprise Lease, which is the lease that the LPD is with. We have a meeting set up for them about mid-October. And after that meeting, I should be able to give through the city administrator's office more definite information. But we are looking at leasing vehicles, hybrid vehicles, and others as we move down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate it. Madam President, I make a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one Ford F-450 crew cab dump body.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Our next agenda item is introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen-eighty-two, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the City of Laurel Employee's Retirement Plan to change the vesting period and to change the employee contribution rate for employees hired on or after October first, twenty-twenty-one. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Ms. Saylor, Director of Budget and Personnel Services, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, Mayor Mel. This also was discussed at the September first work session. And this change to just the employee plan, not the sworn officers plan, from a five-year vesting to a ten-year vesting, and from a four-and-a-half percent payroll deduction to a five percent payroll deduction, is looking forward to sustainability of the city towards our, the contributions required by the city to the pension plans. Those are the changes that are proposed. I'm still working on the questions that Mr. Sidnor asked at the work session. So we'll have those well in advance of the next meeting before action would be proposed to be taken at the meeting of the twenty-seventh. So we'll have those well in advance. We're still working on it. Thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing at six-thirty-seven P M, and I will close this public hearing at six-thirty-seven P M, since there's no one signed up to speak. Second public hearing with possible action at the next Mayor and City Council meeting will be on Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one at six P M. Next agenda item is introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen-eighty-three, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter Seven, garbage, trash, weeds, recycling, et cetera, and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Brian Lee, Director of Public Works, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Mo, and Council members. Again, we worked on this at the work session. This, before you, is the amendment to Chapter Seven, and it's to amend the Laurel City Code for trash, weeds, recycling, in order to clarify and update languages in the code. I won't go through all of it, but as I did last session, I do believe it's important to highlight a couple of sessions, a couple of sections, if you'll allow me. Under Section seven-one, find the city, the city council further finds and determines that excessive accumulation and illegal dumping of discarded bulk items, such as, but not limited to, to old tires, automobile parts, and batteries, dilapidated furniture, junk household appliances, and empty hazardous material containers and construction materials, waste on improved and unimproved property readily threatens and endangers the public health, safety, and or welfare by reason of the fact that such property is or may reasonably become infested or inhabited by rodents, vermin, mosquitoes, or wild animals, or may reasonably cause disease, or may reasonably constitute a present or potential fire hazard, contribute to environmental runoff and singlet, singularly, or in any combination thereof, is hereby prohibited. I wanna bring your attention also to Section seven, seven, to Section seven-three scope, Section seven-point-five. Same on public property and water courses and sources of water lots and appurtenances, particularly seven-point-five A. It shall be unlawful for any person to dispose of waste of any kind or any quantity as outlined in Section seven dash one C and Section seven-two upon any private property or in any water course or source of water supply within the city. As you know, this is something that a lot of those, not only in Laurel, but Tuxit, but others are concerned about. Switching over to Section seven dash seven thirty-two C, prohibited plastics. Thin plastic films and plastic bags are not allowed and shall not be picked up with the city's recycling collection. This includes, but is not limited to, grocery store bags, plastic wrap, shrink wrap, packaging, et cetera, and other materials prohibited by the county recycling facility or the director of public works. All recyclables shall be placed loose in the recycling receptacle and shall not be placed in plastic trash and or plastic grocery bags. Other prohibited materials, polysystering, which is basically styrofoam, is not accepted in any city's curbside recycling program. Madam President, these are only some of the samplings of the importance of getting the ordinance in for the Chapter Seven changes. Thank you for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this ordinance.
I'm gonna open the public hearing at six forty-one P M, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six forty-one P M. Second public hearing with possible action will be at the next Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one at six P M.
Madam President, could I ask a question, please?
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm referring to Section seven dash seven, excuse me, violation. Letter D, small d. The Department of Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services, or the Department of Public Works, designate, shall be responsible for the issuance of citations and compliance orders. I know from my police experience that in order to fill out a legal document, which is what these would be, because if a person contested it and it went to court, a judge is gonna look at it for the legality and everything else of it. And in the police department, it was always based on your training, knowledge, and experience that you have. We also used to take classes on courtroom demeanor, presenting cases, all that. And we always did that under the direction of the State of Maryland Police Training Commission. Now, I know there's been case law on a lot of the cases that we testify in and a lot of the legal documents that we present to the judges and what judges really don't like. They don't like not filling citations and different orders and stuff like that not correctly, which makes them invalid. And I know that the Department of Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services, I know they have a lot of specific training concerning different codes and different things have to be certified through the State of Maryland on a lot of these codes, and they have to keep their certifications valid at all times. So based on their training and knowledge and experience, they get a lot of training to do this in court. I'm wondering who and what sort of training is the Department of Public Works person or designate gonna need to fill out a legal document that's gonna charge somebody and charge them money? And if that person elects to go to court, that they're gonna show up from court and testify, and that they're gonna have the training, knowledge, and experience, and on the case law, are they gonna, are they gonna be recognized in a Prince George's County District or Circuit Court? That's my question, Madam President. I mean, Madam President.
Would you like me to respond, Madam President?
Yes, please.
Councilmember DeWalt, we will work with the city administrator's office to make sure that any of our personnel that are writing tickets has the proper training up to peer standards and what's acceptable in the jurisdiction for our Department of Public Works employees. I am aware through the association, we started this process through I am aware through the association, when we started this process through Apple and Swan and other department works, uh, departments do issue citations. And we, I'm sure that we'll make sure we have the certifications, whatever those are required, uh, prior to having them write the tickets.
So you don't have anybody currently that, uh, could do that, correct?
I have not checked into that yet. I have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next agenda item is introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen eighty-four. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Chapter eighteen Building and Building Regulations, Article nine Property Maintenance Code, Section eighteen dash one forty-eight Rental Properties of the Laurel City Code, adding sections and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Steve Allen, Air Fair Marshal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, Mayor Mo and council members. Uh, this ordinance, as discussed at the work session, uh, will require any rental, uh, property, uh, to maintain a, um, specific, uh, degree, seventy-three degrees, no higher than that, um, during the months of, uh, April through October, I believe. And I'm sorry, uh, May first through September the thirtieth. Um, this, uh, ordinance also requires that, uh, that temperature be controlled uh, throughout the whole rental unit, not just the, uh, a specific room. Uh, also, it has to maintain the seventy-three degrees or lower, um, in each habitable space with a distance of no higher than three feet above the floor level. Uh, this would entail either an HVAC unit or, uh, you, uh, window units. However, um, if they do use units, excuse me, window units, they will have to maintain that temperature throughout the whole habitable space. Um, if approved, the, uh, this ordinance will go into effect April first, twenty twenty-two. Also, uh, we will be working with, um, the rental owners. Uh, if they have properties that are of, of age where the electrical systems will not, uh, support or supplement the, uh, requirements for the HVAC units or air conditions, then they will be able to work with us to, um, to upgrade, uh, the electrical systems. Uh, that's all I have, Madam President, and I stand by for any questions from, uh, any other council members or anyone else. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalt, you have a question?
I didn't, I didn't.
Um, you took your thing off of silence, so I was asking, do you have a question?
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, there's nobody signed up to speak.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing at six forty-eight PM. I will close the public hearing at six forty-eight PM. Second public hearing with possible action will be at our next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six PM.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did someone say something?
Yeah, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, okay. Our next agenda item is introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen eighty-five. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to authorize the mayor and the city's ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Committee, to administer the coronavirus state and local physical, fiscal recovery funds established by the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one as detailed in the City of Laurel's ARPA budget and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. This agenda item was discussed at our special work session that was held before this meeting. Chrissy Cornwell, our Emergency Services Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, may I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Are you able to see the present, of the, um, presentation, Madam President?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right. Thank you, Madam President, Mayor and, uh, City Council Members. Before you is ordinance number nineteen eighty-five to authorize the mayor and city American Rescue Act Plan Committee known as the ARPA Committee to administrate the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds established by the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, President Bynum signed the American Rescue Act of twenty-one into law to support COVID-nineteen efforts, economic stabilization, address public health and economic challenges and replace public sector revenue loss. In May of twenty twenty-one, Mayor Mo directed the formalization of the City of Laurel ARPA Committee to review regulations related to the ARPA funds, develop a program to administer the funds and prepare a budget for review and approval by the mayor and city council. With collaboration of the ARPA Committee, the fee, and the feedback from the city's public ARPA survey, the committee has developed a rough estimate for funding categories that you see before you. Revenue loss, up to two point five million to strengthen support for vital public services, premium pay up to five hundred and fifty thousand, which will provide premium pay to fully vaccinated at central and frontline staff that deliver city services during COVID-nineteen response. Public health, up to three point three million to enhance public health resources and needs through programs and services throughout the city. Economic impacts, up to three point seven million to provide financial relief to businesses, organizations and nonprofits that were affected by COVID-nineteen. Infrastructure, up to one point seven five million to expand enhanced broadband or other qualified infrastructure programs. And administrative, up to eight hundred thousand dollars to assist city with costs associated with compliance and data analysis. Before you is a graphic that is the estimate of the percentages of the budget breakdown. Early planning, the committee has been able to determine a few projects that fit under the main categories that I just presented in the last slide. Under the public health, ARPA committee, under the public health, the ARPA committee has determined it's critical to continue efforts towards COVID-nineteen vaccinization and testing. The committee is also coordinating with the Board of Election Supervisors to examine protective measures need to ensure individuals can safely vote. In addition, in addition, we have also, um, gone through the CDC recommendations and studies that have been conducted uh, to prove that the city needs to upgrade the current HVAC system to enhance the ventilation system. Under economic impacts, the committee estimated three point seven million to assist and enhance programs to aid individuals and families that were impacted by COVID-nineteen, such as food, rental and utility assistance and job training. In addition, there will be programs to aid businesses and nonprofits. As far as, uh, infrastructure, there is an estimate of one point seven five million to support infrastructure projects such as strengthening the city's broadband. And finally, to ensure, uh, the committee is properly administering the funds, keeping accurate documentation and conducting any required evaluations or data analysis, the committee estimated eight hundred thousand dollars under our administrative category. The city has created a web page specific to the American Rescue Act Plan and encourages residents to reference this page for more information. Within that website, the ARPA committee, uh, reviews the feedback from the surveys weekly on the site and will continue to review the public input to ensure the city's objectives align with the feedback. To date, the ARPA committee has coordinated with the city departments to start compiling quotes and detailed information on projects and programs that would support COVID-nineteen efforts, public health, economic stabilization or infrastructure. Each city department must have their information to the ARPA committee by October the twenty-ninth for project or program approval. Once they are approved by the committee, the Office of Emergency Management and the Budget and Personnel Services will coordinate with them to move forward on their projects. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Rao? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Cornwell.
I, I just said, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, there's nobody signed up on this ordinance to speak.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing at six fifty-five PM, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six fifty-five PM. A second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six PM. Our next agenda item is introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen eighty-six. An ordinance to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The, to appropriate a portion of the funds received through the American Rescue Plan Act and to provide an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. This item was discussed at our work session. It was held right before this meeting. Again, Chrissy Cornwell, you have the floor.
I'll take that, Miss, Madam President.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll go back to Michelle Saylor. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Uh, again, we discussed this at the work session earlier. Ordinance number nineteen eighty-six, um, places the funds that the city received into the operating budget. Um, on August third, we received twelve million, six hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and four cents. Uh, a year from then, we will receive our second tranche of the same amount. As you can see from the ordinance, I've added twelve point six million dollars to the federal grant category of revenue, which takes the total operating budget to forty-nine million, three hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars. And on page four of the ordinance, what I have done is to create a completely separate budget department from which we will, um, manage these, the use of these funds. So you can see that, uh, in department number one oh nine seven zero, American Rescue Plan Act Program, where I've added twelve point six million dollars. Again, the budget is balanced uh, with a new total of forty-nine million, three forty-nine, one ninety-five. The regulations are extensive, as Ms. Cornwell, uh, presented to you, the, the, uh, proposed budget and use of the, of the funds at this point in time. They are estimates and we will come back to you, um, with another ordinance if we need to change these appropriations. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing at six fifty-eight PM, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six fifty-eight PM. Second public hearing with possible action will be at the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six PM. Our last agenda item for the evening is introduction and first public hearing on Charter Resolution one seventy-four. A charter, a charter resolution to amend the charter of the City of Laurel, Maryland by amending Article three hundred Government, Section three twelve, meeting oath of office to allow for virtual meetings of the mayor and city council and other city boards, commissions and committees. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Mayor Mo, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I don't really have anything further other than what, uh, we talked about at the work session and, um, this is a companion, pretty much piece of legislation. Uh, we did the, um, resolution last to make sure, um, and it passed through the council to make sure that uh, this is the direction we want it to go. I think it's important that we keep, um, and maintain, um, some type of a, um, policy or, um, you know, virtual meetings in effect to allow us to continue to keep platforms updated, to allow everyone to continue to operate and understand how the platforms work, not only with mayor and city council meeting, but also, um, all of our other meetings um, and commission meetings that we have. I think this gives that latitude um, and puts it back into the council president's hands. So, thank you, Madam President. Let's see if anybody has any question.
Ms. Rao, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, there's nobody signed up to speak on this item.
I'm gonna open the public hearing at seven PM. I'm going to close the public hearing at seven PM. Second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six PM. If there is no further business to come before the mayor and city council meeting, this meeting is adjourned.